The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, planning board meeting November 14, 2023. In attendance tonight is Adam Somerville, chairman.
Elaine Burd, chairman.
President, treasurer.
Spark, people, members.
Lee Andrew.
All right. Yep, she already started recording, so I asked.
No, you have to announce the meeting.
Oh, you do, okay. A meeting is being recorded for those in attendance. I didn't know that part, sorry. Thank you for that. We'll get it done eventually. All right, first tonight is the 250 Stetson Street and 74 Franklin Street. Location property, 250 Stetson Street. Type of district industrial. Structured detached garage with apartment above. Dennis and Terry Smith, 250 Stetson Street. Acquired the property in 1984. No application we filed with the town clerk. No previous appeal has been made. Section of bylaw which relief is requested, 240-5.4. Section 240-6.6 accessory apartment.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Elaine?
I'm just curious, 250 Stetson Street is industrial?
Yes, it's a modest one.
Is it on the extension?
Yeah, it's a very glassed out side. Did you say detached or detached?
I thought you said detached, but maybe I said it wrong.
It is detached.
Sorry. Detached garage with apartment above. Just in case I did say something wrong. Do I need to say, or?
I'm just looking to take advantage of the change in the bylaws and make a place for my daughter.
The garage exists, right?
There's a small garage that exists, yes.
And you're going to have to, you're going to put a second story on?
No, that garage is too small and it's on slab. It's only 16 by 20, so we're going to go behind that one. I believe the plan is.
All right, I can put it right in front of you, plus. Right in the walkway.
I'm going to walk around here.
At least we have someplace in the middle, Mike. Look at that, look at that, proposed garage.
So here's the existing, right here, at my house. And there's, right now, there's a gravel driveway here.
This will be the third structure on the block.
So this is the new one?
Yes, that would be the new one.
Does the garage, where did the apartment come from?
How did you know the bylaws would change? Because another website.
Actually, we were at the town meeting where they changed it. But, you know, we're fine. You know, I would have liked to have done something, but this is on slab and I really don't want to tear it down. Here's the thing, you know, I have a couple of collecting motorcycles I've known who've been here. And, you know, I don't foresee this being like every day back in Portland. But I had, and so yard, a yard tractor. It becomes kind of old, maybe. It would be a gravel, by the way. Here's the existing blacktop.
That page, yeah.
Where are the power lines?
Over here, right here. No quality, and it's over here, and Constitution Circle is back there. I really don't.
But they're not off of Stetson?
No, they're off of, so this time of year, there's no leave in the tree. I can kind of see the roof forms, but during the summer.
So I'm curious, I go up on Stetson Street and I look down and look at your house.
I did.
Yeah, so your house is sort of set here at the end of the, it's not held as a.
No, it's at the end, and kind of, so the road ends.
Yeah.
Then the house is further, you know, further on the.
So next to your house is the power lines.
Exactly, yes.
When you go to the end of the street, the power lines are in front of you?
Judicially right.
Okay.
So if you were, so the street ends. The end line.
Okay.
The house, just keep going.
Yes, okay.
Okay, so, you know, you're kind of left.
You're right.
My house, my house was erected.
That's the lot.
That's it. It's an actual.
What?
The lot.
Do you have a lot in there?
Yeah, there's a storm drive to have it. It doesn't exist.
Okay, but you have no, probably in front of John Stetson?
Um, yes, you can, you know, just whatever the fact, oh, that's all. So they considered, when I put the addition on the house, this is an addition on the house.
Yeah.
They considered this aside, and this, I mean, the house was the front. I don't know if I actually went in.
Not too many years, I couldn't tell.
Yeah.
Probably not, because you had setbacks.
No, I did. Well, actually, I would have invited if they, if he'd have considered, because this is the power lines and there's nothing to look at, you know, there's no rotor up and out here. But if he considered this my front, you know, the front of the house, I would have had, I would not have had it.
Yeah, but it's on the street.
There's no street. All right, so he considered this was the front of the house.
Because that's where the street was.
Yeah, that's the part that actually.
Because when you get to your house, it's really.
What little streeter is.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a sweet spot, a spot as far as, right?
It's a good spot because of the power lines.
The only thing that's bad about it is the hospital, the hospice.
Yeah.
It's old, it's well, it's not flat.
How long was the house?
I believe it was built in 62 according to Accessory Apartments. So it's a concrete, not it.
I don't think it's pre, it has to be actually built that way. She had to live up on the other, but I was kind of surprised to see the house.
So there used to be an owner gentleman, they lived a couple of houses up the street, and Mr. Ryan. And he told me that before the house was there, there was a whole piece storage.
Yeah, that's what I'm like, but I.
Okay. He's also said that, so my house is the last house on the lot. The last house on Ryan's, for Kansas. And.
With his corporate, after I know. I took a watch.
The Porsche. The one on the right with, with Monty's Happy Days to start. Started that place right there.
So so with the building, all the setbacks are all good and everything like that?
Yes.
You just did all the CBA, so the industrial, so naked, present.
Well, I guess I'm just going there to see about the, the accessory apartment by law.
But I didn't know that reason.
I'm doing this in the wrong order, because I went to the conservation commission first. And I've already gone by them, and I have order conditions from them. But they're, but they're, they're fine with the setbacks for the government staying off the weapon and off of my property line, too.
Okay.
Can you have three, two accessory buildings on the lot?
This is the primary, I believe.
Well, you can only, you can only have one principal.
Right.
One principal, you can have 15 accessory buildings?
Yeah. You have 10 sheds on the property?
Yeah, you can, as long as you have power, you know, 10 feet away from your lawn line.
Well, is the, is the existing garage considered an accessory building or?
It's not attached.
Yes, attached, so it'd be like a shed.
It's more than 100 square feet.
If it's not attached, yeah.
Yeah, 16 bucks one.
Yeah.
I don't know, I didn't look it up.
And the second thing is, would you be better protected if your assets were able to give you a variance on a street frontage, in case somebody came to buy your house in the future? Compared to a thing, in the sense that your lot isn't, you don't perform, you don't have a zone.
I found that you can only have one accessory apartment.
Okay.
Yes, within a single family, one.
Within a single family, right. This is a within, because we don't have a.
You don't have to be within the primary building anymore. You can be in the garage.
And I guess.
That's what you want to be written without, inside the primary building, you can only have one accessory. This is how it's probably be written, but we don't have it.
When that first came into existence, that was a street extension. First tops on the right, they ended up getting these three accessory apartments in that one house. That was the first time it even done, and nobody gave a thought.
All right, okay. Anyone else, anyone else, someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion if you recommend to the CBA that a paper garage must be on.
Motion by Bob, second by Elaine.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All in favor? All right.
Thank you.
Huh?
Five oh.
Five oh, yep. I thought you said movement to vote on. I'm the first one.
How you doing, man? All right, how are you?
Did I see that? All right. Second, we have a form C subdivision, Rose Place.
Sir?
Is that going to take my old title?
No, so I'm not going to be, there's, we're just filing the application, because we tried to bring it to the town clerk and they didn't want to accept it in half of the board. So we just have the.
You know, you.
Yep, I can see.
Fine, how you doing?
You overwork with all that work out there now?
Slowly down now. I got a day off.
So I have a checklist. So I have the.
Yep.
You guys still want 150, no?
Yes, uh huh.
And, um. I have two BUDs lists. And I have the main fee.
Okay, awesome. All righty.
I'd be happy to see this one again. Drive by Rose Place all the time. It's already been approved five times.
Really?
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
Over six.
When was the last one? When was the last one?
Um, so it's, it's basically, it got approved in 2008, and then again in 2020. And then due to different circumstances, you know.
Where was it?
It's, it's mostly in Allington. Say 90% of the work is in Allington, but part of the property is in Whitman.
Is it behind Potting Farm?
It's, it's, yeah, it's up near Green Tree.
Drive.
Up that way, yeah.
Okay.
And you said it was approved in 2020?
Yep, it was 2020 and also 2008.
Okay, all right. Were you, were you in 2020?
Yeah.
So if you try to, could you update the locus on the first sheet? Because it doesn't show the streets in Whitman.
Did you see it here?
Let me see, I'll tell you. Back table.
So you've got streets here.
It should show Fox.
No, you've got, you've got a street here.
Or newer street.
It should show Fox over in, in Windsor Drive.
Yeah, so they should be on the.
That has Windsor.
It has Windsor, but it doesn't have the two streets here. One comes up right upon, another one goes in like this.
Does it show Fox out?
We got Shelley Lane and Fox and Mocus.
Yep, so they should be on here.
Yeah, Shelley Lane is off of Fox.
And then, I think, when you get back into here further, you show the Nash Line. You probably should show the button properties here.
So she was three and four.
Because one of the properties directly to the bus, you know.
She was there. I did, I just. So these three.
These three should be listed who they belong to.
So how much would you bring in?
If you just take conditions seriously, I think, seriously, it shows again.
How much would you pay for these in Whitman?
Half of what's on.
Yeah, off the top of my head. So most of all the work is up here, this is where all the houses developed and the streets. It's the stormwater management system.
So the access to this location.
Is through Wilbers.
In Allington?
Yeah.
So even for what you built in Whitman, you'll go through 123?
Oh, yes, yes, everything just comes down Wilbers Street here.
But one house is completely in Whitman, so that.
Only one house?
It's completely, some of the split. This is completely done, she's a split for in Allington.
Wow.
So there's only one house going to be built in the Whitman side?
Yeah, see, it's front is on Rose Place, which is in Allington. It's just the lot itself spans the two towns.
And these are not additional lots?
No, no, they're just, they're just a longer.
Oh, these are existing houses?
Those are new.
But these are proposed.
There's a.
But these are proposed for Allington.
Yeah.
Okay, and the only one for Whitman is this.
So it's got an Allington address.
That's okay, I just, I want to understand. These are the backyards of these houses. So you want, you possibly have the option to put.
No, nothing back here. This is going to be the stormwater. We actually, there's nothing we can do. And this is why. Yeah.
How close is that influence to this?
I'm not sure. Well, that's the way.
How close, what?
Is that.
Well, it's way down there.
Yeah, that's.
So none of the, the runoff from here goes down.
Yes.
The nine Joyce that have down there.
There's a white one here, and here, it's pretty good.
I'm sure it must be here somewhere.
No. You've got, it's a road somewhere here.
Windsor Drive.
Windsor Drive's over here.
Yeah.
And this goes all the way, all the way down to Temple Street.
Yeah.
It's kind of a lot.
So it's.
It could go to like Way and Way where the condos are.
Right.
Oh, it's that thorough?
Well, I mean, that's a ways to get there.
Yeah. All right, thanks.
We don't have any motions definitely made on this, right? Until the present date final.
Right, yeah, yeah, so we just kind of wanted to get them in and then you guys would schedule hearing and then send it.
Can I ask that should develop first?
Um, Rose Place LLC. Rose Place LLC.
Okay, thanks.
Sure. Yes.
It's a.
How's he doing?
He's doing good. He's actually doing the conservation law on this.
Thank you.
You got, is this for us?
Yeah.
Do you have an elastic?
Just a comment.
You sure? It's heavy.
That's okay.
It's tough on our. Tell him, tell Gavin, say hi.
Will do.
All righty, so you are all set.
All right, thank you very much.
We'll see you soon.
Thank you.
All right, next, Mr. Gavin with the four maids.
Actually, I got two.
Two four maids.
Good, I racked it double. Double. One on Fieldstone for Paul Paulson. The neighborhood pool and put a shed out there, Paulson on his house. So he's going to convey a triangle of piece of property of 533 square feet to get the pool shed that has the filters and so forth.
And the step down.
Yeah, and it's in an H2 zone that requires 18,000 square feet. So he's able to convey 533 without making his lot in violation.
Okay.
And it won't impact the sale of the new BUDs.
Is this where Magnolia is?
Yeah.
Or is that what's up?
Yeah, it's, yeah, Fieldstone, Magnolia, River Bridge, very end of Fieldstone.
It's down there somewhere?
Yeah, right, little square.
So Fieldstone.
Comes in up West, and the first jet to the right is Magnolia, and then it comes straight back in this one, saying the very end.
Is Magnolia?
We want to go down this one.
This way? Oh, to you.
No, it's not, you're coming. You're going to move it up. Up, so it's not going. I can keep on, keep on.
Up to you, down.
River Bridge, keep on, keep on.
Oh, okay.
There's a little sack.
Okay, yeah.
It doesn't show it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, now, I was thinking it was more up the other end.
What do you need, two four maids?
Yes.
Check.
Thank you.
One more, and the next one's two.
Is there a Paulson in such a, in this?
Yeah, Paulson owns lot 11, which is lot 11 in the, in the original Fieldstone subdivision is lot 11. So this becomes lot 11A, Paso 11B is being conveyed to Kimberly, Susan, Susan Barasa, vocable trust. So there's a note on here that Paso 11B is not, is to be combined with the budding land of Kimberly, Alvin Barasa Trust, trustee.
There's definitely enough acreage on that.
Where's the pool?
There is a pool out there, it was actually, it's totally built out, wasn't it?
And that belongs to Mr. Paulson?
No, no, the pool belongs to.
To that Barasa.
But the pump house.
The pump house.
Oh, okay.
A small corner of it is on, but it's, it's tough to move it because it's got.
So it's really.
All inline pump pumping.
Yeah, yeah. Like, like it going in there.
So this is just the little bit he's giving.
Yeah, 533 square feet.
Just to get the setbacks for the shed.
Yeah.
Is my.
The shed is on the property.
Yeah.
The setbacks are there.
Well, it's off, it's over the line now, we're just approving a bad situation.
All right, any other questions? All right. The ninth one.
Where the shop be?
I got another one of Milwaukee, one over here, it's a fine point.
Yep.
All right. Listen, this is the 14th, right?
We should make a motion that it's, doesn't require.
Doesn't follow the subdivision.
Yeah, so we should make a motion that doesn't follow.
Most of the, the next one, which is going to be. Two rods, it's Avery's property, but Egan's paying them. It's going, it's being attached to his property.
We'll make a motion that this doesn't follow the subdivision.
That's okay.
The last one, did you get that here?
Yep.
I was just waiting on you to make sure you're all set. All right, motion by Bob, second by Elaine. All in favor?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Here's another one. Paulson. Paulson.
I know so many people.
I certainly need to much for that one.
She's walked all the time.
Yeah. Sure.
Second one is, is property that's owned by Donald Avery up on Howard Street.
Motion.
I don't, I'm going to, I'm going to do a question. Howard Street, which is.
He owns Steve, um, cutting together.
Yeah, well, that's, that's what this is for. Thank God. I think 26 home call, two days. So the Avery piece on, is 503 Howard Street. It contains 12 and 1/2 acres. It's in the. It's in the residence A2, zoning, where the house and the barn is. We make a lot containing 21,000 square feet, so it's over the 18,000 square feet. Has 123 for a frontage. We're cutting off a 1.3 acre passo in the back that is to be combined with a budding land of Egan, Egan Development on Howard Street, which we've had plans, and matter of fact, we took this lot out of Egan at one time also.
Is this Mr. Avery's house?
Yeah.
This is a lot.
That's what they had.
Is that cool enough on it?
Yeah. That one in front of the, the only vote for a bear, it's recorded not that long ago. I think it took a year ago. This is an existing lot, none of us are named, but for me, this is a budding.
Where did Davis' house, where, where it was?
Yeah.
And so that's, that's public, he needs to.
He sold that off, he took that, he brought that planning for.
Oh, but that's so hard, I thought he was going to tell that it's public.
This is the one, this is the one.
Yeah, he's built a house, and, but it's, it's frontage for this, this piece here is actually down next to, yes, by the barn.
Yeah.
And also a bus, it's also a bus, but the other one, we're in the process of doing this project. Some seniors.
Seems like senior 55.
Um, yeah, but more, more simple to handle, so they're going to be on it in this time.
Do they get how many?
I think 20, 20 to 30. I think it'd be good for the town, yeah.
Elaine.
It's going to be yours, the senior holder. Well, over 55 or over 62 or whatever.
Yeah, but we're not, I mean, that's what he's going to have it for, but he's not, he's not going to be designated as a 4DP or anything like that. But we're just doing it.
Well, I mean, is it going to be run by?
No, no.
No, 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 no. It would be like, like a modular park that they, I mean, we used to call them trailer parks, but now they're a bunch of homes. But these are going to be stick frames. There's one that they're like on the golf course over in Waymouth.
Yeah.
Small options, 3130.
With a ranch.
With a garage, yeah.
They're not small houses.
They're very expensive.
Oh, oh, yeah, very, those are now, yeah. There were some over there that are small.
But the beginning, yeah, I had a lot of friends of the old, you know, I can't afford it.
They, what they.
I can't, I can't afford.
They invite you when the golf, and here we come.
No.
They needed the restaurant.
Right here, they break the windows. Uh, yeah, but it includes a garage, you know, so it's not really, it's not as big as. When I said one in Waymouth, it's actually, it's, Dad is saying God, but that, that, the sun works again.
David Fair is about that, how big?
Is it Ben's Fair? Something like that. It was, it was done by Bristol Restaurant.
That's in New York.
Yeah.
It's a restaurant, they have it. I can't remember the name of it.
I don't usually forget a golf course name, but I forget that one.
I know where it is.
It's on Strawberry Valley.
No, no.
No, it's in, it's in Waymouth.
It's all on the Frank Street.
Right on. No, right on the Waymouth line, Kingdom Street.
Oh, is that Black something?
No, 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 don't.
I don't know, right? Pine something.
No, no.
I'll make a motion.
I've eaten there, I ate once.
All right, it's on the, it's a ranch. I don't like this thing, I don't.
So right now, is there?
So there is a note, I mean, there's a note on there, Paso 1B is on the bill of a lot that's to be combined with budding land of Egan LLC. The remaining portion of Avery's lot and funds is only for.
Setbacks.
So he's not going to build any, he may just come out of the property.
It's going to be part of.
Yeah.
Part of this big piece, yeah.
He may build something there.
Weatherbain.
Weatherbain, that's it.
Yeah, I mean, we, we may, I mean, we're not, he's not buying this, 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 for back, and I mean, he may be a house here, a house there, a house there, I mean, something small, you know?
Yeah. Okay.
My motion, motion?
Motion to recommend this.
No, the motion is, it does, it isn't required for subdivision.
All right, you have a second?
Second, well, somebody second it.
Yeah, Wayne made the motion, you second it. Motion by Wayne, second by Bob. All in favor?
Yes.
All, five?
Well, they didn't, they didn't sign it.
Yeah, they gotta sign.
Yeah.
One of her. I need you guys to sign a second copy for us.
For yourselves. I think she, you need two, right?
Yes. Yes, please.
Is there any progress in Howard Street?
I'm gonna sign both of these.
Boyer?
Oh, the Boyer?
I was talking.
Uh, yeah.
He was in my office today. He's finishing up a house in Brighton. This kid, Dan, he's got a, two, I think, but.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'll let you know, I'll keep you posted. Winter project for me, I'm gonna do it outside here. Are you ready? No, just fill that up.
These methods are bad.
Oh, they're gonna access that.
Oh, yeah.
Right, where, where you built the two families?
Just before, there's a, there's a, a pipe sticking out of the ground, that's so fire, that's the, that's where it's.
That's the, that's the floor, so.
How many is there of those?
Good question. Depends what. They're gonna be two families, some of the ones that were, you can go out, some of them.
The ones that you can go with.
Just.
We have a side.
Oh, yeah, yeah. That's one thing, yeah.
Just, yeah, just appreciate it. Good for you, just get that. File that.
You got that one? Oh, no, that's the last file.
Well.
Mind you, go back to your bike, yes, okay. So let them do what they want, let them just have, let them make sure they dry.
You don't have to put a fire system in three of them, you do what you want.
That's just, yeah, right.
You start rolling a fire system, you're still doing this.
Yeah, but then you're gonna go to eight, you might lose.
Three or three on this.
Five of them?
Yeah.
All the specials, they're all weekend, and we have more.
One for us, one for.
There is a fire system that we have. So you.
I know, I know.
Then we have more five.
This is like.
Eighteen thousand dollars.
Well, I'm caught on top of the.
We have five hundred thousand dollars in the screen.
They gave stock up today. Move my name four times.
Two panaces.
That's mine. Yeah, that was, yeah. Yeah, we're getting confused.
Yeah.
Which is, uh, I don't know who's.
This is just. I don't know why these.
These are just the other copies of this, of Howard Street.
Howard, Howard.
That's five oh three. Well, that's just the copies that you guys keep, you don't make one. Yeah, yeah, it's, it's just this.
Yeah, we love, we love.
And this is Avery's lot.
One of those fields.
Is that twenty-one?
Thank you.
There's two of each one.
All right. Do you guys have this one?
I don't know.
Yeah, oh, that's okay. Mine sounds like a phone, I'm trying to call the ball. I had some piano, I'm sorry.
You probably have to wait. I guess you say Avery's. You don't need that.
There's a two on ease. So you pull that, one is us.
Yeah, you keep two of the field some, you.
Okay. Okay, finish up. Does he have the two of Fieldstone? He's already going in one time.
He was in, he was in the service.
Yeah, it was kind of all over the same.
He was owned by, yeah, they were both the girl and they got out of the service. Was in the farm, and then they run and build, and they got out of service, but.
How far down is it?
It's not that far.